Recording in progress.
Everything looking good?
We have sound.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Pacific Grove City Council Meeting. This is the regular meeting tonight, Wednesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty five at six P. M. We're here in council chambers at three hundred Forest Avenue in Pacific Grove, California. I'm calling this meeting to order. And I'll ask my colleague, Councilmember McDonald, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. I'll note that all council members are present tonight. We have a full complement. And I'll entertain a motion on item one to approve tonight's agenda.
Move to approve the tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, we got another motion by Amelia, a tie for a second. And we'll go ahead and go ahead and take a voice vote on this. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, seeing none, we will take the agenda as stated. Moving on to item two A. This is a certificate of recognition in honor of Mr. Stillwell, Richard Stillwell. And I believe we have some folks in the audience that are gonna wanna come join me as I read the certificate and present it to Mr. Stillwell's wife. I apologize, this mic takes about a minute to load here.
How's that?
No, okay, here we go. Hi there. Hi, Mrs. Stillwell. Hi, how you doing? So I have here, thank you very much, members of the family and friends for coming to support Mr. Stillwell here for this certificate of recognition presented to Richard Stillwell in recognition of his exceptional dedication, service, and contributions to the community. His unwavering commitment, generosity, and lasting influence enrich the lives of all who knew him and strengthen our community as a whole. And it is signed by our city manager, Matt Mogensen, and myself. So, Mrs. Stillwell, I'll present this to you tonight. And the council and myself, we, you know, Mr. Stillwell was a treasured part of our community. So thank you so much. And, you know, God bless. And do you have anything you want to say? Or, okay. Sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mo, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, just inviting the public and staff and the entire community. The service will be this Friday at two o'clock at the Methodist Church at nine one five sunset. Thank you very much, Mayor and council members. Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item number three, council and staff announcements. And I'll first recognize the city attorney for any closed session reporting out that needs to be accomplished.
Yes, I'd like to report, we did have a closed session scheduled for the end of the regular meeting on November fifth, but that closed session did not take place. And then we had a special city council meeting on November twelfth. There was a closed session at that meeting, but there is no reportable action from that closed session.
And tonight's session.
Thank you. Tonight's closed session has no reportable action either.
Okay, thank you very much. I will now recognize council members for any council announcements.
Councilmember Amelia. December, well, first, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and eat a lot. Anyway, December first is the tree lighting ceremony at five thirty down in front of the museum area. Just wanted to mention that.
Thank you for that. That's a good announcement. Councilmember Ralph?
Since we're on city events, Thursday, the fourth is the Festival of Lights in downtown. It'll start at six o'clock, so we look forward to seeing everybody out there.
Yes, thank you. Great, I'm glad you guys covered those. Perfect. Okay, and any staff announcements, Mr. Mogensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple. First, I'm gonna ask Katie Clark, our Recreation Program Manager, to provide some of those.
All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and members of the public. You guys beat me to it. You already announced a couple of them, but I'm gonna announce them in order. The holiday season is here, and we have several special city-sponsored events that are on our list for the end of the year. The first is Monday, December first, the City Council, City Council, City of Pacific Grove will host its annual holiday tree lighting ceremony down at Jewel Park. On Thursday, December fourth, the Chamber of Commerce will host its annual parade of lights down on Lighthouse Avenue. On Saturday, December fifth, the Chamber of Commerce will host Stillwell's Holiday Fun in the Park down at Caledonia Park. And then on Saturday, December thirteenth, the Arthritis Research Coalition will host the Rudolph Run, five K, one K walk-in run. Additionally, the Recreation Department has prepared a full lineup of several events for the youth and their family of our community. Some highlights include a gingerbread house decorating party, a winter craft workshop, the Polar Express PJ Party, and new this year is a sensory-friendly Santa visit. We have some additional programs as well. All those programs can be viewed online on our website page. And the Recreation Department would also like to say that we wish, look forward to celebrating the holiday season with our community, and we're wishing everyone a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Mogensen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mogensen. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. It's that time of year for our annual vacancy noticing for the boards and commissions. So pursuant to the municipal codes three point oh two and three point oh four, the City Clerk's Office has published the annual notice for all boards, commissions, and committees, and has posted a copy in the Kiasp on Laurel Drive. The City Clerk's Office will be accepting applications through December twenty second for those interested in serving on any of these boards and commissions. These are additionally for current board, commission, and committee members with upcoming term expiration dates in January of twenty twenty six. They must reapply. They've all been contacted, and anyone interested can find our application online or can contact the City Clerk's Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? No, okay. All right, well, so keep your eyes open, there's a lot going on the first ten days in December. So have a lot of fun out there. All right, so let's bring it over to item four. This is general public comment, dealing with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda tonight, the regular agenda. So I will ask now, is there any members of the public wishing to make general public comment at this time? We'll take chambers first. If you're ready to come, come on up, please.
So, good evening, Mayor Smith, council members. I'm Jeanne Anton, here to give you an update on our Chicago Hall fundraiser. First, I'm excited to let you know that our committee has selected Hunter Porter Eldridge to be our architect. And we're kind of waiting for things to get settled with that, but he's a local man, local, grew up here, and more on that coming soon. I'm also pleased to let you know that the application for national landmark status was approved by the State Historical Resources Commission. The final step will be for the application to go to the keeper of the National Register, which usually takes place within forty-five days, but because of the government shutdown, it's going to take a little bit longer. So I'll keep you posted on that. We were happy to be selected to be part of Monterey County Gives this year. The campaign is on right now, and it will continue through December thirty first. Please look for our write-up under Arts and Culture in the catalog. Our big idea this year is to specifically ask for help making the audiovisual system better in order to attract more groups into Chicago Hall. So with that, our fundraising continues. You know, I still remember Tina saying they shouldn't have to do bake sales, but we're kind of doing quilt things instead. So I especially want to thank Claudia Samus, the owner of Back Porch Fabrics, for the quilt raffles that she organized. We've made several thousand dollars that way. I want to thank Wilda Northrup, a local artist. She generously donated about fifteen of her appliques that were framed. And as of yesterday, all but one had sold right away. And I want to thank Noreen Nance, who kind of made all the arrangements with Claudia on that. And also, I'd like to have a thanks to her for helping me with the whole project. Could not have done this by myself. We will be having a fundraising dinner in January, on the thirteenth of January, so mark your calendars. This year, this time, it will be at Passion Fish. And again, more on that to come. So eventually, together, we will make Chicago shine. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Council, my name is Mike Gibbs, a resident of Pacific Grove. Here to talk about something a little bit different. I've been thinking a lot about AI, and we need a new way to arouse the citizens of PG and set a path for the future filled with economic vitality, state-of-the-art city services, and a rally cry to bring people together with a common purpose and vision. Most of you are familiar with AI, generative AI, fresh pools of investment cash, and critical unmet city needs to mend a new model for city government. Recent survey in the Wall Street Journal of thirty-eight hundred businesses in the U. S. found increased productivity and performance with AI, including more immediate response times to customer service inquiries up to a minute, up to the minute reports to vastly improve ordering inventory and accounts payable, continuous customer product engagement, real-time expense tracking to identify waste, overspending, and abuse, and I mean real-time to the minute. You can pull out your phone and see where that is if the C. I. CEO of a business. Evaluation of multiple contract proposals in minutes, not days, weeks, or months. Instant upgrades on staff assignments, project status, and activity tracking. Robust facility asset management, spending, maintenance, and priority tools. We have the talent right here in PG. There's a woman in town, some of you know her. She offers a service that can quickly evaluate buildings for the most efficient use of energy and water. She's headquartered here in Pacific Grove. Biggest customer is Google. Another can take a photo of an existing space, create a new park design, produce a realistic picture of that space or of that park with plants and a cost estimate at the lowest cost for labor, plants, and materials, real-time. We think of AI as a set of large language models set atop cutting-edge, cutting-edge chip design for the benefit of systems, processes, and people. But a more fitting name for the uniquely U. S. innovation of AI, a more fitting label for AI is American ingenuity, and that resides right here in Pacific Grove. And Pacific Grove has a potent mix of the human spirit, grit, nimble capital, and a culture of dynamism. You all know that about Pacific Grove. AI will profoundly change how government gets things done. And I truly believe that Pacific Grove can lead the way. What have we got to lose? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online that should make a general public comment? Miss, Madam Clerk?
Here do not appear to be any hands raised online.
Okay, one more in chambers. We'll take Mr. Kubica now.
We do need more in City Council. My name is Andy Kubica. I am a resident, speaking as a resident, not a member of the Planning Commission. As part of the May seventh presentation on the budget presentations, there were several items that were on the capital improvements. One was for roof repairs at the youth center. One was for the city hall door and window replacement, and one was the police station roof repairs. I believe at the last city, at the last city council meeting on the fifth of November, we finally got an approval, the council finally gave approval to do the roof at the police station after the first rains have started. And we are in a rainy season. I'd like to know the status. Do any of you know the status, or someone here could tell me what the status is of the other two and this one? When are we gonna start repairing the items that may be damaged by water? And when will they be completed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any hands raised?
Yes, I have one hand raised, Lisa Gianni.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate the Heritage Society and thank the council for your support of the Chicago Hall National Register nomination and getting that, getting that done. It was a no-brainer, but that doesn't mean it didn't take a lot of work. And it was a wonderful experience to watch the State Historic Resources Commission meeting. The whole meeting was fascinating, but I was so impressed by the the appreciation that the commissioners, the state commissioners showed for humble, humble sites that were so meaningful in the history of all these different communities. It was, it was really great to to see this recognition of the importance of heritage to people in a community and that connection. So if you get a chance ever over the holidays to watch that, the video of that meeting, it's really well worth it. It was, it was fabulous. But again, thank you for it, council, for your contribution there. I thank you to Luke Coletti, who brought this to us, and, and, and thank you to the Heritage Society and wishing them well going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further hands, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close general public comment, bring it back to the council for, we're now on to the consent agenda. These are consent deals with routine and non-controversial items. And so at this time, I'll ask, does anyone on council wish to pull an item of consent?
Nine B.
All right, that's the Cedar and Sunset in Congress. Okay.
Correct.
All right, that's pulled. Any members of the public wishing to pull an item on consent that's not nine B? We already pulled it.
No hands online, Mayor.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion on consent to approve absent nine B, which we'll hear directly after consent is approved.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Amelia to approve consent, second by Walking Stick. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item nine B. We'll take that next in order. And I'll invite Mr. Go to come forward.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the City Council. In anticipation of this item being pulled, I did prepare a very brief presentation. So let me go ahead and give that to you, maybe four or five slides, if I recall. Okay, so this item was before the City Council at your second September meeting of this year, so just a few months ago. I would like to reiterate before I get into the presentation that this is not just the intersection section that we're talking about. This is the entire corridor from the intersection all the way up to Forest Avenue. It's gonna address sidewalks, it's gonna address bike lanes adjacent to the high school, and also the intersection, and then how we treat Nineteenth Street and Sunset. So just a reminder, this whole presentation is a reminder of what's already been presented before the City Council. If I could figure out how to make this work. Okay, so in twenty sixteen, the city and the Transportation Agency for Monterey County conducted a study of the Highway sixty-eight corridor, which is, you all already know, is the Caltrans jurisdiction. What that study determined is that the intersection at Cedar, Congress, and Sunset is ripe for improvements with the two schools nearby, Forest Grove Elementary and then Pacific Grove High School. The city entered into a funding agreement with the Transportation Agency for Monterey County, TMC, for Measure X regional funding that is earmarked for the Highway sixty-eight corridor. We entered into that. We entered into that agreement in twenty twenty two. The City Council in July fifth of twenty twenty three authorized staff to enter into an agreement with GHD, which began Phase One of the Congress, Cedar, and Sunset Intersection Improvement Project. So what did Phase One do? It evaluated alternatives, a stop versus a roundabout. With that, we also hosted numerous public outreach meetings, a City Council meeting on December twentieth of twenty twenty three, a community meeting January ninth of twenty twenty fourth at Chautauqua Hall, a community workshop at the high school on January twenty second of the same year, a traffic safety commission the following day, and then we had a targeted public survey primarily sent to the residents adjacent to Cedar and Congress about how they felt about these potential improvements. There have been nine public meetings and four workshops on the topic since two thousand and twenty two. In April of twenty twenty four, council approved a single build alternative at the intersection, which was the Roundabout. That's direction that we've been pursuing. Here is that roundabout. This is a concept. This will change. This is just a concept. But I want you to realize that we're about to embark upon the beginning of the construction. That's Phase Two. So Caltrans accepted the city's Design Engineer Evaluation Report, which means we didn't have to go through all of the reporting requirements associated with Caltrans. We also don't have to now pay Caltrans fees associated with this. It's a streamlined process. Moving into Phase Two of the project focuses on developing the plans to a thirty percent design and also the environmental documents associated with the project. This was presented to the City Council at your September seventeenth, twenty twenty five meeting, along with the options or along with the request to pursue amendments, the amendments for the Transportation Agency for Monterey County to increase the funding agreement with them, and also then to pursue the amendment with GHD to per continue with Phase Two. That's why we're here tonight. So GHD funding, the Phase One contract was for seven hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars and some change. The Second Amendment's three hundred and forty thousand dollars for a total of one point one million. To date with GHD, we've spent four hundred and forty four thousand dollars. Phase Two will encapsulate what has been saved in Phase One because we didn't need to do all of the PID and project initiation documents and so on and so forth, and we're able to go into the D E R process. Otherwise, this contract would probably be like one point six million. So then we have the funding agreement with TMC. That's one million dollars of that larger five million dollar bucket. So we need to increase that by one hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. I've been working with the Transportation Agency in Monterey County, and their board passed the additional funding to the agreement at their October meeting. So that's in your packet tonight, is that funding agreement increasing that by one hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. So the recommendation tonight is to authorize the execution of Amendment Number One with TMC to increase that funding agreement by one hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars and authorize the execution of Amendment Number Two with GHD in an amount of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's Amendment Number Two with GHD because if you recall, about a year and a half ago, I came to the council and asked just for a time extension as we were working through the D E R. They had no additional money. It was only time, but that was Amendment Number One. So this is Amendment Number Two. That concludes my presentation. As always, I'm available for any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead and go to public comment on this item, item nine B. Anyone wishing to comment? Now is the time. All right, take chambers first.
My name is Beth Shamas. I live on Sunset Drive, about four houses up from the intersection. I go back to twenty sixteen at the first meetings I attended. My concern is really the pedestrian safety there. And all of the design elements for the roundabout are really, in my opinion, not considering pedestrian safety well enough. I know they have pushback crosswalks, but I I just don't see it as being very viable for student safety on crossing those streets. I do, if there's going to be a sidewalk down Sunset on my side of the street, that would be really helpful because right now you cannot really get to either intersection from my house unless, you know, I usually jaywalk because even walking down on my side is a little dangerous because it's 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 close there. Also, Nineteenth Street coming out, I don't know what what is projected for Nineteenth Street coming out to Sunset. But I remember back in twenty sixteen, I suggested there be a stop sign on Sunset at Nineteenth just to slow that traffic down because you can't believe how fast trucks come down there, even though knowing there's a stop sign at Congress, they fly down there past my house. So anyway, I'm just here to remind the council that pedestrian safety is what I'm really concerned about and making it a safer corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. There we go, another one.
Susan Goldbeck, Pacific Grove. I came tonight to urge you to slow down a little bit on this. I've yet to meet one person that thought this was a good idea, the roundabout, or that we needed it. I've gone through hundreds of pages of documents that Mr. Go sent me. And he suggested that I give my questions to you, which I did. But my main question is, at what point, if we haven't already passed it, can we stop and change course? People want to know whether or not that can be done. Sandra, could you put that picture up for me, please? The main reason, my understanding, one of the main reasons that this was supposed to be done, although no document says that this is going to vastly increase safety, and I contend that if you take the time to go down there and envision the roundabout there, ask yourself this question. And I asked Mr. Go, and he couldn't come up with an answer. So maybe you can. We're worried about those kids crossing the street. And if anybody thinks they're paying attention, they don't know kids that go to high school or grammar school. So in the middle with the roundabout, you're going to see a center divide in Sunset. Mr. Go calls it the refuge. Well, if you enter the roundabout on Congress and you want to get go up the hill, you're going around and remember, a roundabout is to move traffic faster. So you might have somebody right behind you, going pretty fast, going around the roundabout. How are you going to stop for somebody in the stop sign before they get to the refuge? Mr. Go said, well, they'll be in the refuge. Well, maybe they will, and maybe they won't. So the provisions that are made for our kids and this very ill conceived project needs to be looked at very carefully. Secondly, Mr. Go already says it's going to be two million dollars over the five million dollar grant, two million dollars. I asked him, where did you get that? Where are you going to get the money? Well, I think we're going to get a grant, he said. I said, how do you know that? Well, they don't know that. And we certainly are not in a financial position to take that kind of risk over something that, if you look at those documents he sent me, that I'm supposed to pick through and decide what his opinion is. You look through those documents, not one says we need this. He doesn't even say that. He says, oh, well, we're primed for improvements. Well, is this an improvement? Go down there, look at it. I really urge you and pretend you were going around that roundabout with your with another car following fast behind. A kid's walking across the street in the first leg before they get to the refuge. Boom! They you have to stop if you can stop for them. It's very likely that the car behind you is going to have is going to rear end you because the whole point of a roundabout is to have traffic moving. It just is not safe, and plus, we don't need it anyway. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike Gibbs, again, just to reiterate, has been going on for a couple of years. We've talked to a lot of people about the roundabout. And I haven't found anybody out of a maybe seventy five folks, residents of Pacific Grove, who saw the need for this or thought it was a good idea or that it should go forward. And maybe this is one of those projects best left for common sense because I don't see it. I talked to the consultant when he was here, who put part of this plan together. I asked him about the safety issue. I said, when you did your survey, did you find any compelling reasons from a safety perspective for this roundabout? He mumbled around and stumbled around. It didn't really come up with any good ones. So from that perspective, I don't see it. The second is the issue of eminent domain. And you all know there's a government power to take private property for public use. This is clearly public use with fair compensation, compensation, and following due process. So I asked the consultant, I said, how many times does eminent domain lead to lawsuits and delays? He said, well, it's not insignificant. I don't know exactly what that meant, but it meant it was more often than people might expect. So just something to consider. I think it's problematic. If we have to put our time and attention, there are many more pressing issues having to do with city streets and things that are just out there. Maybe it's not TMC money, but free money sometimes doesn't come free. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead and go on the online comment for this, if there is anyone.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there's at least one hand, two hands raised now. Colleen Ingram.
Yes, thank you very much for taking my call. I just wanted to request, I know it's it may be out there, but Mr. Go's presentation that he's doing tonight as an update, if it could be made public. And also, I'm, this might also be be somewhere, but I haven't been able to find it where the the school system, PGUSD, has weighed in on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Angela Lawrence and Dyer.
Thank you. I have long spoken out against a roundabout here and the fact that it is not safe, whether it's Bennett Traffic Commission or and the only people who seem to want this desperately are Director of Public Works, our mayor, and a couple of council members. Members of the public are not for this. They really aren't. And you can hear them telling you this over and over in meetings. And our public officials are definitely not listening and not hearing and don't care. And I still urge, because I think that the way this has progressed, it is like they have just stuffed us into a box. And it has gotten so out of hand now that they're plowing through anyway. And we are going to be left with a huge unfunded bill and a mess. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No further hands, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead and close public comment on the item, bring it back to the council. I'll recognize Councilman Walking Stick. Pull the item.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll try and keep this brief. Because I'm tired of throwing money, good money after bad, because this is massively unpopular with the community. Given that this does not address the core issue of child pedestrian safety, in fact, to me, it appears to make it less safe. I believe this entire project is a dubious community value. Therefore, I move that we disapprove execution of Amendment One, disapprove execution of Amendment Two, and we discontinue all work on a roundabout at Cedar Sunset and Congress.
Do I have a second on that motion? Motion dies for lack of a second. Who's next? Who would like to speak next? Councilmember Row.
Thank you, Your Honor. This came up in the campaign in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty. And I think as we get down the road with the housing element, from my perspective, we're expected to add one thousand one hundred and twenty five new dwellings. That could add seventeen percent to our city our city population. So if you think about almost twenty percent more people, more cars, hopefully, fingers crossed, more students. This is a five year project, and what I fear is that we wait and we get to the point where we've added these housing units, and now all of a sudden traffic is a mess. And now we've got another five years. We've got to wait to fix what's wrong. That intersection is fraught with all kinds of things. I won't drive there in the mornings and the afternoons just because I'll go all the way around town if I have to. So I think we just, we're looking forward. We're trying to plan our infrastructure instead of getting out the duct tape and handing Mr. Go a popsicle stick and saying, hey, let's go fix this road or this corridor or whatever. But this is part of the planning process, and for me personally, it looks at the housing element, and what do we need to do to support those one thousand one hundred and twenty five units? It's as simple as that for me. It's planning the infrastructure that we're going to need moving forward. And so I don't know if anybody has not put it as simply as that, or if, you know, the you know, the folks that don't want to do it, don't understand that, you know, how long these infrastructure projects take. And the fact that we can get funding to do it, and we don't have to lay burden to the to the to the taxpayers, I think it's I think it's the advantage. Now, as I've always said, if we can't make it work because the funding doesn't come through, then, you know, I think that makes the decision for us. But while we have the ability to get the funding, we need to move forward with the project. We need to support these eleven hundred and twenty five units that are coming, and we need to we need to relieve some of this traffic that's a mess. Now, people say, well, you know, the pedestrians and it's, you know, it's dangerous and people driving it. You don't hear all of these complaints in Europe. You don't hear it on the East Coast. You don't even hear it here in the places where we've implemented a roundabout. And I think of Highway sixty eight, and I think people have, you know, maybe lost some short term memory, but I remember trying to get out of PG at four forty five and getting stuck on and getting stuck by the hospital all the way down to to Skyline Forest because you can't, you know, all of those people were leaving work and you can't, it was, you know, an hour to get it through there. So I think this is part of the plan and and I supported, I supported it, you know, during the campaign, and and I think it's a good project, and we need to move forward with it.
Absolutely. I completely agree. I'll just going to throw out some comments, and then other people can talk. I completely agree with all that. This is a corridor. Remember, this is, I think we've said this a few times now. This is a quarter. We're going to improve the entire quarter. So that means if there need to be safety improvements on sidewalks on Sunset, that's probably going to happen. If if we need to put a stop sign coming out of Nineteenth, I'm sure the engineers will take all that into account when they're going to develop the final plans. So this is, I'm a hundred percent convinced this is going to improve safety in the intersection because I drive, happen to drive through the intersection twice a day, and it's it's not the most fun place to drive. So and also, if you're trying to walk to the football game on Friday night, trying to cross streets at night, there's no lighting. People are kind of jamming around in there. I try to stay with the kids on this side of the stop on the of the limit line so that I'm like away from the cars, not walking into the cars. So there's a lot going on. We I don't want to beat a dead horse because we've already talked about this a million times, but I think that it will be an improvement on the corridor. And it's great planning. Like, like we said, we're being proactive. We're actually being proactive. This is amazing. You know, we're not just putting duct tape on stuff. And we got the money for it. So we got, we got a lot of a lot of grant money. So yeah, that's like a green light to me, in my opinion. So I'll recognize someone else now. So I'm supporting both recommendations, one and two tonight.
So this project goes back to two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. It has been before a variety of councils. And as a latecomber to council, my policy is not to rehash what has come before, but to understand it. And so I went back to the previous agenda reports, which led me to previous agenda reports, which led me to previous agenda reports, and then ultimately to the TMC report, which was Which was very robust and it describes their research. It describes their, um. Outreach, uh, which was quite extensive and also underscored their, uh, their, the importance of pedestrian and bicycle safety. One of the things I think we all want is for people to get out of their cars, um, to walk and ride bikes. Uh, we're starting to see more e-bikes, which if, whether they're a good idea or not. I, I think that kids going to school are going to be on a variety of different, um. Wheeled objects. And so having a very safe delineated lanes of travel. For people on foot, on wheels and in cars is, is really important. Um, I also want to say I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Go to ask about the design pictures we've seen. And he reminded me that they are conceptual and I appreciate that point that you made tonight is. My question was, how safe is, is a pedestrian? When they are in a crosswalk? And a person is driving, leaving the, um, roundabout? And is there enough room for one or two cars to stack up? And he pointed out to me. That while this is conceptual, when we do get to this next phase, which is the design phase, that is the kind of issue that gets settled. Um, and so that is something that we can't say how it's going to work yet. And I understand the ambiguity can be a little irritating. Um, but this is still a work in process. We're moving through phases. I've talked to lots of people and most people go roundabout. Um, so it hasn't really, it does seem to strike interest for some people. Um, I've seen as, heard as many people saying, yeah, that's a tough intersection as saying, no, we don't need it. So. I think we need to listen to the experts. We have experts. Um, I am not a traffic engineer, but I, I hear what they are saying. Um, from TMC and then the consultants we've hired. Uh, to give us the best designs possible going forward. Um, I support this. As have the, all of the council, the councils have had majorities supporting this throughout the entire process. So. It has a long history of support from multiple council members. I'll be one of them.
Thank you. Go ahead. Chaps.
Thank you. And, um, thank you for raising the concerns. I, I know, but these similar concerns were raised previously too, and, and I know it's a, it's a ongoing topic. Uh, I, I think it will be beneficial to, for, for the staff to. So I remember, I mean, when we had presentations before, there were evaluations on, on effectively. Uh, how many collisions will, will we have for, uh, about versus how many collisions are there for a stop sign? And I know there is like, uh, at least a twenty five percent drop in collisions and fatalities. Uh, with respect to, uh, a stop sign, like four stop signs versus like having a roundabout. So, so it's just, just a fat, matter of the fact that. Somebody who's exiting from a roundabout is just looking at one, one spot, which is. Uh, going, going one direction. Whereas if you're in a stop sign, you have to look at four different spots before you're making. The actual progress for a car. I can tell you that I am not comfortable and I believe that this intersection is dangerous. Not only for me as a driver, but also for my kids with the stop signs and, and nobody can convince me otherwise on that. And, and so I, I do believe that, uh, the other, the other pattern here is that. The reason why Sunset Avenue is, I would say problematic is. It is too wide. And I think this corridor improvement. Will bring elements into the picture where we'll make the entire Sunset Drive now. Which automatically means the speed which the drivers are coming through today because of the wide kind of lanes. Is going to slow down dramatically. And I think that itself is an instrument to say that we're making improvements on safety. And so, so I'm, I'm completely supportive of it. What I would recommend staff for, for, for the future, because some, some folks have suggested. Some historical kind of like presentations, et cetera, to be put out is really some information on, uh. What is the difference between, uh, a roundabout and a stop sign and what kind of safety elements come into the picture? With respect to those two, because I think that will be helpful. Uh, there are several, you can actually Google it. There are several. A Google cases itself, but having said that, gee, I remember GHD coming in with a presentation. It was just like a, just a massive presentation that, uh, I think it may have been lost and, and the entire conversation. But I think that, that little picture gives a, gives a great visual on why roundabouts really matter. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Tina or go to Councilman Raoul again, then go to Mayor Protem.
Mr. Go, I'd like to ask you a question. Um, I'd like to address, uh, Ms. Schumacher's concern. When we talk about that quarter on Sunset, we're going to add sidewalks on both sides of the street. Is that correct?
That is the intention of the project. That is correct.
Yeah. And I think that's going to help tremendously. So I hope you. I hope that helps to ease your concern about the, the sidewalk improvement and the pedestrian traffic. Cause right now it's, I feel like I'm.
Uh, Mayor Protem? Yeah, just, um, I'm going to make a motion here in a minute, but I just. Want to ditto what everybody else said. I'm not going to repeat it all, but one thing I do want to mention, mention is, um. The future. You have to think about the future because. Ten years from now or five years from now, the traffic is not going to slow down. We're not going to suddenly have nothing there. And, uh, Dury mentioned about, uh, his kids, but I've been through that intersection with my. Three grandkids in the car. And I feel like I need four eyes looking both direction like a, a iguana going this way, going that way. To make sure I get through this intersection. Of course, that's just me, but I'm also talking about the future. I think we are going to have traffic in the future. Uh, there's no doubt about it. And, uh. Councilwoman Ral mentioned about the housing element that's going to be also adding, you know, so. I truly believe that we need to, uh, continue this project. I was supportive in the beginning a couple of years ago and I'm willing to make a motion, Mayor.
Yes, I'm making it, moving to approve recommendations, one and two.
Correct. Uh, I moved, make a motion to approve recommendations, one and two.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Raoul. Yeah, you have a discussion? Okay, go ahead. We already got the second.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so I know this is something that's going to keep coming up. It's always going to be an issue in the community and. And I think that the biggest challenge we have is I don't think enough information has been presented on how exactly this is going to be safer. Um, and, and so rightfully so, people are concerned about safety in the intersection. This is why when it originally came before council, one of my big questions was. Um, are we committed when we do this? So, so the deer gave us a way. To bring down the cost because currently the cost isn't fully covered. But there has always been the option, if the cost isn't covered, for us to revert to one of the other alternatives. That said, the EIR is now being done for the roundabout. So that would, you know. Um, involve maybe doing additional research on that, but. If we find that the safety isn't there, if we find that the money isn't there, we do have other alternatives. But the advantage, I think at this point anyway, of continuing with the process is that. It is about the whole corridor because what I think is really important is not to leave it like it is now. And I'm still not certain whether the roundabout is the right answer. It may not be. However. The traffic calming that will come from the sidewalks, the bike lanes, the, the corridor in the middle. Removing the crosswalks from the intersection where there's too much going on. There is a lot to be gained from the overall project of the entire corridor. And I think we need to, to kind of keep that in mind, at least still at this phase. And I think we'll know a lot more when we get into the safety because I agree that we shouldn't move forward. Until we have commenced, convinced the community that this is a safe alternative for our. Families, our children, for traffic in general. Um, it is a highly tourist area, probably on the weekends when people are leaving up Highway sixty eight from the beaches, but during the weekdays, it's largely locals. And, um, I hear a lot of stories of people making illegal U-turns in the intersection. So just various things we can do to improve safety for the children. Is the key advantage. And I think having this whole study done. Takes us in that direction and we still have room to decide after this, if the roundabout is the right place. If we can't acquire the land, if it's going to cost more money that we don't want to have to cover. Or, um, if it's not as safe as billed, then we still have the option. To make a different decision, but I think that this part of the process, the phase we're in now is what gets us there. So we can make the needed decisions after that point.
Thank you. We'll go and take a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Hey, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Protem moved.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Paderi?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
And Councilmember Walking Stick?
No.
Motion carries six, one.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's work on the item. Thank you, Mr. Go. And we will now go to item eleven A. Now done with consent item. We're now on to eleven A, public hearings ordinance to amend the salary schedule. For the minimum wage change, Stephanie Ariola.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff and members of the public. Today, this is an ordinance to amend the salary schedule minimum wage. So this will go into effect January first, twenty twenty six. The California minimum wage will increase from sixteen dollars and fifty cents to sixteen dollars and ninety cents. In our four employers. The city has a few classifications. Which will receive this increase. The following are cashier for the lighthouse. Intern, lighthouse docent coordinator, recreation assistant one. And there are no financial impacts since the minimum, minimum wage was taken into consideration for this fiscal year. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go out to public comment on this item. Any, any public comment on item eleven A. Increase the minimum wage to state law. Seeing none.
Online.
Okay, seeing none. Bring back to the council for, for action on the item. I'll ask the city attorney to read the title, please.
This is an ordinance of the city of, city council of the city of Civic Grove, amending the salary classification schedule to comply with California minimum wage. You can now just make a motion to approve the remaining recommendations.
Do I have a motion to approve the remaining recommendations? Motion by Rao, second by Paderi. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Go ahead and take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Miss Ariola for keeping up, up the statutory duties.
You got it.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh, move on to item thirteen A. This is. Uh, review of five year operating capital forecast and. I'll introduce or I'll have Fred and Mr. Marsh introduce this item to us.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, while he's setting up, um. Provide a few opening comments to, to open up the site him tonight. So as you're aware, this council has made fiscal responsibility focus this year, and we've also adopted that into our twenty five and twenty six. City council goals and work plan. Council is also, um, you know, interested in taking actions that promote good financial governance and also to address. All of our deferred maintenance and other needs that we've been talking about more recently. So the item that we're bringing to you tonight is, is aimed at reaching two of our goals. The first one is review and revise. Policies to meet equipment and facility needs. And the second goal would be identifying reduced expenditures to enhance revenues. So the presentation that, um, administrative services director Fred Marsh is going to walk you through tonight to communicate a few things. First, we're going to talk about, you know, how we are looking. With our five year fiscal forecast after some small updates after the first quarter of this year. So kind of do a check in on that. Um, then we're going to talk about the challenges and pressures that our general fund continues to experience and will continue to experience. Um, then we're going to talk about some different, um, measures that we're looking to take to reduce expenditures, gain efficiencies. And to, um, better control against, um, fiscal responsibility going forward. And then we're looking at, um. Going, um, how we're going to, we're looking at our capital needs once again that we presented to you last. Close, or study, study session of last meeting. So I give you an overview of those once again, so how this all ties together. And at the end of it all, we want to provide to an option. To pursue an agreement with a professional assistant, a professional consultant to help us with engaging our residents to understand better their perceptions. Wants and needs of the city services. Um, ultimately, this, nothing that we're talking about tonight or, you know, going forward through this fiscal year. Are we going to find like one single solution to the overall issues that we're discussing? This is, this is not a this year thing. This is not a last year thing. This is a long term thing. And Pacific Grove is not by itself. I would say most cities in California are facing a lot of these challenges today. I think, um, the cities that are doing well through this though, are ones that use this more of a unifying and rallying place. Versus a, you know, a place where there's no, there's really no blame in this. It just is what it is and we. Work together and we find solutions. And I think those solutions are on both sides. Of the ledger, of course, they're going to be on reducing expenditures wherever we can. And looking for ways where we can push up revenues wherever we can. We'll find it somewhere in the middle. Because while we're doing all this, we have to continue to operate. We have to continue to, um, pay of our bills. We have to. You know, provide our youth programs for our police services and everything else we do. And attract high quality employees and high quality council members and everyone else along the way. So. Um, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Fred and, um, let him walk you through, uh, the presentation for tonight.
Right, great. Thank you, Matt. Um, so yeah, basically part of this is going to be a rehash of some of the stuff you've seen and some ad stuff that Matt mentioned as well too. So first of all. I'm going to kind of give the council kind of a, kind of refresher on the five year forecast that we originally presented back in May. So initially back in May, in essence, um, you know, this, and we incorporated the two year budget as part of it. So. The good news is with the two year budget, we are still beating the, you know, the council assigned goals of the twenty five percent. Um, in our general fund, but you can see we are facing deficits, you know, each of the years. Um, so the reserves, you know, projected if we basically did nothing, you know, dropped dramatically. So, um, oh shoot, this, sorry, this is the older version. Let me go. I don't know how that happened. Sorry. Um, but yeah, let me go to here. Um, basically what happened is. Um, what we've done now, we've updated it for a couple of different things. Now, we have our final fiscal year. Um, basically, uh, results in, and the fund balance came in a little bit better than we thought. A couple of different things. Our property taxes came in better, um, than we thought. And we did also have some, you know, because we had some vacancies during the year in some of the departments. So we had some personnel savings as well, um, with that as well too. Um, let me jump to kind of a couple of these other things. So, uh, but we are really still facing some significant challenges kind of going forward. Um, our revenues pretty much are pretty, pretty stagnant right now. The one area that's still kind of growing is property tax, but our major other areas such as TOT. Um, and have been relatively flat and are still projected to remain flat over the next couple of years as well too. Um, we're still, you know, like all of our surrounding cities, we're having to fund increased amounts towards the unfunded pension liability. Um, it, the budget does include, you know, funding for the MOU for this current fiscal year. And we also did forecast some, you know, assumed increases for the next couple of years as well too. We did not assume any basically increases in staffing within. Um, with the expansion with the recreation programs, obviously we had to add some part time staff to it. So that added some cost. Um, and the insurance costs, as you know, just statewide have gone up very significantly with the wildfires in California. So it's impacted us like all the other surrounding cities. So like Matt said, you know, we're looking, trying to look at, you know, continuing ways, you know, to help address the deficits that we're, you know, we are facing here in the city. Um, the great news for us is the hotels, you know, shortly going to be ready to open. Um, we're anticipating that that will generate at least a million dollars a year, you know, which is going to be a real plus for us. Um, as you know, ATC still has a bit to go, but what we've done in the five year for, that revised five year forecast. Is we did assume that it was going to start in twenty nine thirty. Obviously, there's a lot before that actually happens. Um, if that happened, we're projecting it would generate about two million dollars for the city. So obviously that'd be a huge plus for the city. Um, we're going to continue to look at our CED and recreation programs, you know, to increase the recovery rates wherever possible and really. You know, provide the most, most bang for the buck, you know, for those programs. Um, one of the things we're going to look at in the future as well too is just park, parking in general. I mean, some of the areas we may look at in the future might be along Ocean View. You know, in the downtown, you know, just making sure we're maximizing our efficiency, uh, efficiency and effective use of staff, you know, and monitoring parking in the area. Um, looking at the rental process that we have for the rental of our city facilities. Um, we do this right now, but we're going to continue to look at, you know, grant opportunities whenever we can, you know, to maximize, you know, the, the matching funds that we have available. Uh, in our funds. Um, and then also with our bid and hid fees right, right now, we do not collect any admin fees for that. And that's. Pretty untypical. Most of the cities do charge some sort of admin fee. So that's something we'll be kind of discussing with council in the future. Um, if we're looking to potentially change that. Um, on the expenditure side, the good news is, um, on our pension obligation bonds, the last payment on that is in twenty eight, twenty nine. So we'll be realizing savings from not having paid debt service and that about one point six million dollars a year. That's pretty significant. Um, you know, we've had, we're currently in some really good regional partnerships right now. A couple of good examples are with City Monterey for fire. Um, and M one W for basically, you know, the sewer, or joint sewer maintenance, basically. So we'll continue to kind of look, you know, when, when opportunities come up, you know, in those areas. Um, we always. We always continue to kind of look at the most effective way, whether it's contracting or, you know, the use of in-house staff or services. And also, as part of future budgets, too, we'll look at the amount of museum contributions. Right now, the way it works is it's a little bit over one percent of our city budget. So as you know, and that's grown quite a bit over time. So it's something just for some, something for council to consider for going forward. And we always look for ways whenever we can to, you know, strive for continued efficiencies in the ways of our operations. We've started to do this a little bit already, but look at our boards and see if it makes sense to potentially consolidate some of those going forward in the future. You know, Dan and his staff have done a great job, you know, in working with their other regional agencies whenever they do projects to integrate the sewer, you know, and the streets components of those projects to make it, you know, the most effective use of funds. And we've started this already, but we're going to continue to do this as far as the expanding the digitization of city records as well, too. So one of the things that was asked for last time when Joyce did a great presentation on the capital projects, it's just a refresher all that we've done, you know, in the last several years. So I wanted to just kind of highlight this. A lot of this was in Joyce's presentation back in May, but I just wanted to kind of refresh staff on a couple of things. So in the last six years in the different areas, we've really done a significant number of projects in several different areas, including the facility improvements. We've done a number of this kind of list and number of the projects that we've done by area, you know, in the city. And then park and rec projects, we've done, you know, eleven significant projects, you know, over the past five to six years. And again, these lists that, you know, the significant areas we've done those projects. Transportation, I mean, this is really important. You know, Dan and his staff continue to really invest and make the most bang of our limited funds, you know, in the city. You can see we've done over basically addressed over three point three million square feet in the city. That's a lot, you know, in, you know, a significant amount of time. I think one of the key stats is that bottom stat, how this P C I has gone up significantly from a forty-five to right. I that number is a little bit dated, but it's still fifty-five. It's, you know, gone up significantly over the last six years. So it's, I mean, kudos to, you know, Dan and his staff for all that they've done in the city. And this is basically, if you look over the last six years, we've spent basically over thirty-two million dollars in capital improvements. And so we've really maximized the use of our funds. And one of one of people asked about basically how much have we spent on average in the different areas? So on average, during the last six years, we've spent about one point three million on sewer, two point six million on streets and five point four on different types of facility improvements. And just remember, some of these, you know, are funded by grants as well, too. That helped kind of the funding for some of these. So then five-year C I P. So one of the great things about us looking to do a five-year C I P is that this is actually considered a best practice, you know, and a lot of cities and special districts do this. And it's just a great planning tool in general, and Joyce, you know, talked a lot about this last time. But that's really one of the important things for us for, you know, kind of looking forward, you know, and making sure that we're, you know, we're planning properly and that we're setting up the funding right so we can be kind of more proactive in the stuff that we do here at the city. So and this is again, just a rehash of kind of what Joyce presented last time. But you can see over the next five years, we're projecting to spend about, or the ideal is that we would spend about thirty-eight million dollars, you know, on basically different types of transportation, sewer, facility and parks improvements. This doesn't include, as Joyce mentioned before, we still have to do studies on stormwater and for parks and recs. So the number would likely go up. But it gives you at least a, you know, preliminary idea of the amount of money that we really should be investing in city infrastructure. So there is a significant funding gap, you know, in that area. It, you know, we're projecting over the five years, it's going to be about twelve million dollars. And as what I showed you earlier, unfortunately, the general fund really does not have the ability, you know, to act as a funding source, you know, for these capital improvements. So we really do maximize the use of our limited funds that we have. We already, we basically make sure we make the minimum general fund contribution so we can get our measure X monies, you know, for our streets. That's really all that we can kind of do in the general fund right now because, you know, the limited funding status in that in that fund. And these, yeah, so these just talk about unmet, as Joyce mentioned before, the unmet facility and pavement needs. So basically, one of the things we want to do is look to address how would we address some of these funding, these deficits for the capital improvements? So as, you know, Matt mentioned before, you know, using a consultant firm is pretty common. I mean, we've done it here actually in the past with a couple of our measures. As you know, we have kind of two sales tax measures that were adopted by the city, and they used a firm in the past to kind of help help go through the process. So we interviewed three firms that are really well-known in in the state, basically. The one we're recommending, it has extensive amount of experience. They have over twenty years of experience, a very high success rate, and they've been involved in a number of ballot measures in the state. So the there's kind of two parts to this project. The first part basically would cost, in fact, I apologize because this is a little bit older one. So I'm going to let me pull the current one I have. So, yeah, the there basically would to be two costs to the components. The first part of the phase would be about fifty-three thousand dollars. So that part would be basically consist of the consultant, which would be about nineteen, a little bit over nineteen thousand plus travel and a direct cost of another five thousand, and then twenty-eight thousand for the polling. That would basically include an initial poll of the residents regarding services, facilities and the infrastructure. So then what would happen is we would basically, between us and the consultant, we would present the results to council and probably either, I would say, by February. And then council can determine at that time if they would like us to go forward with the process. So if council decides at that point to go forward with the process, the second part would, we are estimating it would cost about eighty-eight thousand. There's about three parts to that, basically. It's about thirty-nine thousand for the consultant. That includes some travel and direct cost. If we decided to do this, what they would say, target polling or second polling, and that would cost about twenty-seven thousand. And then the consultants recommending that we would do some informational mailers to the public as well, too, for another twenty-two thousand dollars. So the total cost, should we decide to go from start to finish, you know, with the process and assuming the vote would go in November of twenty twenty-six, it would be about a hundred and forty-one thousand, basically. And the firms were recommending at this point to go with, it's kind of a combination. So props and measures is basically the consulting firm that we're recommending to go with. And they are recommending the firm True North Research, basically, as the polling firm. Both have had an extensive amount of experience, you know, in doing these types of campaigns and have worked very effectively, you know, with their clients for doing these kind of things. And with that, yeah, basically, and I'm going to, again, this, I want to really read the most current one, and I apologize for not having the current one up there. So basically, we are recommending a couple of different things for council to receive the presentation and then to approve of this professional services agreement with props and measures for ballot measure feasibility, preparation and outreach services and not to exceed amount of hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. And Matt, I don't know if you wanted to add any final points, so.
Thank you, Fred. And I, yeah, we'll, we'll try and find the the side with the recommendations so they're more clear for everybody in front of them. But I do want to just also remind us that, you know, going into this year, we had talked about our revenue softening perhaps a bit, looking at the economy and everything. So we we had, we had, we had reduced our revenue estimates by seven hundred thousand dollars. But in order to make sure that we could soften as much as we could, we also cut expenses by one point four this year. In addition to that, we added extra money into our capital program so that we could accomplish certain projects that were priorities. So we've already started on the road. I'll put it that way, you know, towards doing what we can internally to be as responsible as possible with the public money so that anything that we look at in the future is really about our infrastructure and how can we maintain it to the level of standards that that our residents expect here in the city. So I think that's a lot of what this culminates in tonight is, you know, going out and getting some information from them and understanding more what they see as the needs and their desires and what kind of standards they expect us to hold the committee, the community to. It is, you know, I do realize that it's the not to exceed number is, you know, a larger number. However, this is a phased project and we can decide to stop at any time like Fred explained. It's also just doing the poll. We can, you know, there's a lot of good information that can come out of that that could, that could help us going forward for at least a couple of years, regardless of where we go with this. So with with that, I don't have anything else to say. We do have the representative from props and majors on the phone. If we do have any questions or anything for for her as well, her name is Alex. There you see her pop up. And like I said, if we have any more full on the recommendations, then we'll put that up.
So I conclude the report?
Okay. Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For the for the very comprehensive report. So we'll go out to the public for public comment. Anyone here in chambers or on line machine to comment, please step forward.
Yes, I'll give you comments for free. I think we've done a good job in a lot of public works areas, and I do think that for Pacific Grove, our our jewel of a town is all about the ocean and butterflies. And and so to that extent, you know, like making Ocean View Boulevard and Lover's Point, you know, very, very attractive. And and I know we worked on that, but just to keep that in the forefront because that's where the tourists go. But the other thing that I really like to see is if we talk about consultants or I feel like Pacific Grove needs a plan to fill the vacant storefronts. I mean, it's kind of glaring. You got, you know, two large ones downtown plus the old Peter one. They're just vacant and and it's not a good look. And I just think that I've never heard any ideas on how to promote businesses in those buildings or what do you want to do with them? Because it 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 makes it look like we're kind of fading away in a way. If you, you know, you're walking downtown, I I just don't appreciate that feeling of like, oh, you know, this didn't look like P G when I was growing up. So I'd just like to see some plan by the city council. I mean, you talk about a five-year plan. What's a five-year plan for developing businesses in the city? Thank you.
Come on up.
My Gibbs, again, the challenge for Pacific Grove is great, and traditional methods to respond to state mandates, manage cash and raise revenue are not working. The old model of raising taxes and fees against a picture of economic decline will ultimately be disastrous. Nobel Prize-winning Milton Friedman, who most of you may remember, called it this process the tyranny of the status quo. Doing more of the same isn't going to fix the problems we have ahead of us. Again, talking to over the past, since this came up, a number of residents, I couldn't find anybody that wasn't frustrated with a city proposal to spend a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to convince ourselves that we should raise money from ourselves. Right? There haven't been any really creative alternatives. I didn't see anything in the agenda report. What else could we do but hire a consultant and raise taxes? That's what's going to end up happening. The good news is that the economic future of the United States is pretty bright. Since the beginning of the year, there have been five trillion dollars in private capital investments in the U S. Economic growth surged in the second quarter to three point three percent at four point one percent this quarter. Things are going pretty good, I think. Not everybody agrees with that, but what really is hidden here is the trains of dollars are sitting on the sidelines. Gen X, Gen Z'ers have accumulated a lot of accumulated a lot of untapped wealth. For example, thirty thousand employees at Microsoft are millionaires. That is booked millionaires. It's not just their investments. Same thing at Nvidia, Google and Meta. So there's a lot of money out there. The recent federal budget bill is going to allow more types of investments in municipal debt instruments. These things will be very interesting. We haven't seen them before. And I think Gen Xers or Gen Z'ers want to live in towns where they can contribute and invest their money. P G should be that. We have a great pool of talent in Pacific Grove. We have people who have served on presidential commissions, served at the state and local level. But we have, I think, a very competent planning commission. And I've always thought for the past two years, this planning commission could do more work. They're ready for it. They could do some of this work. This is not hard. We know the city better than outside consultants do. They're going to write a formulaic report, and they're going to submit to us something that we already know we need to do, save the money. Right. So I think a couple of things that I would suggest is is that we need a, not a commission, an informal group. Call it a fundraising group, a genius committee to do a couple of things. First, Carmel has a Carmel gives, they've raised millions of dollars. And they've funded a lot of project. We should do the same thing here in Pacific Grove. Use A I to save money. Come up with some grants and proposals. There are millions of dollars out there unaccumulated and use A I to make our businesses more effective and our city more effective. Thank you.
Okay, one one more. We got another one in chambers and we'll take the online after that.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Andy Cubica. I'm speaking as a resident, not a member of the planning commission. Has been stated in the budget process and also in Mr. Marsh's presentation that the city has budget issues. The staff and its council have decided to dip into reserves since the revenue is down up here to come up or to keep up with expenditures. Now the staff and the council went to spend a hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars on a consultant to tell the city how to increase revenue. We have performed this before with consultants, and they've come up with the same ideas. And consultant recommendations sit on the shelf that we've had. We've done this repeatedly. The residents have been told that we need to have high competitive salaries for our employees. Yet, the city then goes and hires consultants to perform many activities. I don't understand why we cannot have our staff do this work. Respectfully, suggest that the staff function request for more revenue. There are also many local residents to assist the staff and provide ideas and assistance, thus saving the thousand five dollars. Some suggestions to for additional revenue is to increase the T O T from fourteen percent to twelve, from twelve percent to fourteen percent. The staff and chamber economists can work together with the most to improve the number of nights that visitors come to stay in Pacific Grove. The staff and chamber economists can work together to increase new business and in town that generates sales tax. This would also draw more visitors. Some suggestions for reduction are review the staff assets by staff or volunteer committee of residents with a spreadsheet versus a hiring consultant. Perform a top-down versus and a bottom-down review. What tools and vehicles do the city not necessarily need anymore that we have used and are sitting on a shelf and don't need replacement? There are many things we can do. We can reduce a lot of the work efforts and replacements that we have in the public works, the police department, the sanitary and erect department that have accumulated over the years. There could be ways to reduce costs. We seem to always go after a consultant and they always come up with the same ideas, and then we just waste the money. And I'm sure there's some on the shelf here. Thank you. And there are volunteers who would be great to help you. And we used to have a committee, and it was disbanded by a previous council. We could have a citizens committee assist this council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead and go online.
Thank you, Mayor. Angela Laurenton-Dunham.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. It didn't quite unmute right. Mayor and council, I do not consider spending a hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars on basically a big old marketing firm because the first fifty-three thousand for a survey to find out what Pacific Grove really wants is a little more palatable than the second part of it, which is basically marketing to Pacific Grove residents why they need to tax themselves more. Because this this firm specializes in property tax, transfer taxes, bonds, parcel taxes, assessments and fees. And oh, yes, the biggie, a ballot measure for raising council member stipends. That was in there, too. And I'm kind of thinking, well, that's one of the reasons that this council is even entertaining this is because they want to see about their ballot measure for raising their stipends. I don't think we have any problem getting quality people. I don't think we have any problem getting quality people either as staff or as council members. Well, possibly. But this is really a marketing firm on steroids. And I really do, one of their questions is, what are the parameters in dollars of the, the tax tolerance of residents right now? Well, I can tell you mine is zero, zilch, nada. My tax tolerance is gone. So I don't see these people as, as this consulting firm as really helping us with raising revenue for businesses. I think they're trying to, I think this is a way to see about taxing us more. And certainly when we raised the sales tax before and we did it in-house, but unfortunately the legal firm we had at that time ended up putting the wrong tax code on our ballot measure and it, we had to wait another year to, and vote again, which was just an incredible brouhaha. So I would suggest you practice a little fiscal restraint here and not hire this firm. I think that just a survey to find out what the residents really want. We're the voters. What we, we do. And unfortunate, well, no, it's fortunate because half our town is not voters anymore. Vacant homes. So thank you very much.
Any further answers?
I will bring that's mayor.
Okay, we're going to bring this back to the council and I will note for the record that we have received the presentation tonight. So recommendation one is complete. So we will be deliberating upon item two, the professional services agreement with props and measures. And before we get to that deliberation, I'm afraid I'm going to need a break tonight. So I apologize to everyone, but I need a break. So we'll come back at 7:35. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Okay. I think we're back online. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So we're back online. We're on item 13A. We're going to deliberate recommendation number two, professional services agreement. And there, there, I've been told there's a hand up. So we'll allow that person and only that person to speak, whoever that is.
Okay, we have Carl Lindstrom.
I just wanted to take a moment to say that, that, you know, all of these proposed programs, especially, you know, between the roundabout and all the free money guaranteed, there, there's just no way to pay for any of this.
Thank you very much. Okay, that public comment has previously been closed and it's closed again. And again, I'll narrow the issue. We've received the report and now we're here to deliberate recommendation number two. And is anyone? Oh, Councilor Garfield.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I have some questions for Ms. Wora, Mac, Penlik?
Yes, you got it right.
So we've heard from folks with various assumptions about what this polling would get us. What kind of actionable information would we get from it? And can you describe some kind of, what kind of, of results you'd be getting? Are you asking questions like, well, would you pay taxes for this? Or are you asking questions like, which is more important to you? Recreation programs or paved streets? I mean, so can you give me a better idea of what me as a resident might hear from you about?
Yeah, correct. So it's a little bit of both. So we would work with city staff to develop the, the poll and the survey. And you would have questions like you mentioned, kind of what are your priorities within the city? And, you know, would you be in favor of, just throwing this out there, of a sales tax that would fund X, Y, and Z for the city? So we would gauge that from the residents and bring that information back to you so that you can decide how best way to move forward. And how we do that is we develop an unbiased statistically reliable evaluation of voters' interests in the city. Particularly if it's on a local revenue measure and we help identify how to structure a measure if you want to move in that, in that route. And what the electorate's priorities and sensitivities are around different funding mechanisms.
Okay, so it's, thank you. It's not just about what revenue measures do you, would you swallow? It's, it's more like, well, what's important to you about the city? So the city knows going forward, what kind of capital improvement projects are more important than others?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so it helps guide some policy decisions as well as, as revenue decisions?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that information.
Thank you for the question.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilor Perdery.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. Just for me, Mr. Marsh, just a quick reminder in one of the slides you had mentioned, like the, the five-year forecast.
Yeah.
And it appeared to me the expenses were going up by $3 million. Expenditures was $3 million between like three years, roughly a three-year time period. What, what is exactly driving that $3 million additional expense?
There's several different things that are kind of driving it. So number one, what we've done is we've just assumed now, obviously, and when you, you negotiations are kind of going on for the next few years. But we had to, we didn't want to assume obviously a 0% increase. So we did assume about a 3% increase for compensation for going forward. Inflation right now is at about 3% overall. And so we basically assume that for going forward as well too. The insurance premiums unfortunately continue to go up very significantly. And so we factored that in for going forward as well too, because obviously affects the general fund. The other thing is the funding of the unpensioned, the unfunded pension liability. Those payments are, they continue to go up. And so those are factored in the forecast as well too. So kind of all of those things, you know, kind of lead to the rise in expenditures over time.
Okay. So it's not like one singular item. It's like a combination?
It's a combination. That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you for that. And through, through this effort, through the consultant or otherwise, to be always see like, like, like you just mentioned, everything going up, right? Like construction costs are going up, et cetera.
Exactly.
So are we, what I see is like we look at the master fee schedule and adjusted by CIP, CPI index, like every annually, I believe. But would a good representation be like based on what the costs are going for everything around us? Our service fees need to be adjusted accordingly. And will this consultant help in something like that too?
Not necessarily on the fee side. That's kind of where we have a separate fee consultant. As we've brought to council before, basically the As we've brought to council before, basically, the fee updates. But one of the areas we can definitely take a look at on the fees is basically, and I kind of mentioned this in the slides as well, too, is our fee recovery rate. So our CDD recovery right now rate is pretty well, it's about between eighty to ninety percent. The, the rec programs in particular, because we've expanded a lot of the programs. And a lot of those programs don't necessarily have a lot of participation. So the revenue recovery rates on those are low. So this is something going forward in the future. The recreation staff's going to evaluate and may bring back some recommendations to council in the future. As far as identifying some programs, maybe to potentially discontinue. And then also, like you said as well, too, we may look to adjust the fees we charge for some of those programs to bring up their recovery rates on those programs. Because right now, the target for recreation is about thirty percent. We're not even there. We're between about twenty to twenty-five percent. Typically, rec programs, you never really receive a recovery of more than even fifty percent. Because obviously, it's a lot of it is, you know, it's a service that we're providing to the public. And, you know, if you tried to charge full cost to the programs, you just have very low participation, you know, with programs.
Got it. And I'm just trying to get a sense of like, how this, this consultant will operate, just generally. So somebody mentioned weekend stores, right? So is the, is the city, can the, can we use the consultant to do some polling for weekend stores? Is that part of the package or, or now?
Matt, do you want to, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I was gonna say.
Sure, Councilmember, there, there could be a question that we could come up with that'd help us to understand more what people are looking for, for, for new retail stores or groceries, whatever the store type thing is. But not specifically for this, you know, on, on that, we are looking at several economic development opportunities and programs. For example, the council recently reallocated water to try and incentivize people to move in downtown. We are working a lot more tightly lately with the chamber and we're looking at other ways that we can embrace, I guess, working with our, with our property owners who have been a little reluctant so far to really engage with us. So I think we're, we're getting a little traction with that. So what I'm trying to say is, not directly to your question, is we have other avenues. We're pursuing that.
Okay. All right, so then let me just focus on like another question, maybe pertinent, which I think could apply. So right now, as it, as from what I know, like, the business license tax is capped at a certain rate. So which is like three thousand at the end of the day. Technically, we can use this consultant to pull for what, whether that cap can be lifted or not? Is that safe?
We could, here's the, the business, so we've, we've actually had HDL, which you know is a firm we kind of use for some of our different revenue sources. Look at that. It would definitely generate some additional revenue should we eliminate that cap. But in comparison to some of the other revenues, it wouldn't generate nearly as much revenue. So this is something we're going to really have the consultant take a look at is, you know, we have some thoughts as to some potential revenue ideas. So we thought we'd basically work with the consultant, kind of get, you know, the residents' feedback as to what they would potentially be open to as part of their surveys. And then basically bring that back to council and see what council would like to do as far as, you know, going forward.
Okay, yeah, I, I just read the firm's name as propositions and measures, right?
Yeah, can be props and measures, yeah.
And so I'm looking at like, business license tax would require probably something on the ballot. These guys would, would be involved in there in some capacity if we were to do it.
They, they absolutely would. Matt, were you gonna, looked like you were gonna say something. Go ahead.
Yes, not necessarily, but I, but I will say that that'll be a choice of the council. You know, the idea of the poll again is to figure out what the community feels and what they would support or not support. So once you make a decision going forward, if you want to pursue something next year, say on the ballot, you would also need to make a decision on whether or not we continue the contract with props and measures. Or if we stop there, you have your information and you just want to not use them any further.
And for all practical purposes, it's, it's per, per measure, that's the defined amount?
No, so the budget is made up of a per monthly amount, you know, like a retainer for the, for the fees for them to, to work with, with the city to provide, I guess, more of an educational campaign type thing on a specific measure, once you decide to do that. So leading up to that is just about polling and about gathering information so that you have that information. And you can make a, a scientific decision, if you will. You know, it was, it was, there's been lots of things, you know, mentioned that we could just do our own surveys or things like that. And those are, you know, good ideas and you can get informal things. But what we're trying to do here is kind of get a sampling of what 10,000 people think. And those are people who we don't talk to very often. You know, there's a whole lot more people in the city who vote here. So that, that's really the, the goal of this, this scientific poll is to get the best true information from a sampling of people for, that represents a lot of people.
And I think that's the key thing, his, exactly what Matt just said, scientific. I mean, you know, if staff were to do it, we really couldn't kind of really guarantee a scientific, you know, kind of accuracy. Where, you know, the first, especially the firm that they're looking at, the True North, you know, research, they do these all the time. You know, they are specialists in this area and they know exactly how to approach it to get, you know, results that are going to be, you know, fairly representative of the community.
Okay, one last question, then I'll, I'll sum it up. So by entering into a contract with props and measures, effectively, the True North is a subcontractor. So we don't, we're not, we're not putting additional money towards True North.
That is part of, that's, that's, the 141 includes that and that's a great question.
Okay, yeah, and I, I think at the end of the day, like, when we go out to put anything on the ballot, right? Now, the, there is a cost involved there for the city, whether we like it or not. And I think this just gives a, I would say a proactive way of us to decide whether really want to put it on the ballot or not. Because intensively, there's a cost involved for everything.
And it's important for council to know, too, because there's different types of, and we talked about this earlier as well, too. But there's different types of tax measures that can go on the ballot. One or more, just like a general purpose kind of tax measure, for example, which are a fifty plus one vote. One or, and the others is more, you know, a specialized purpose, where you just have it for one purpose. And those require a two-thirds vote. So it's, it's, that's where the polling's going to be really valuable. Because you're going to see, you know, what the level of desire is and to see, you know, does it make sense to go forward?
Okay, yeah, and, and so, so for those reasons, I, I, I'm supportive of this effort. I also want to recognize that like, it's a, it's a, it's a phased approach, right? Like, so after phase one, you're going to come back to the council and really evaluate whether you want to proceed with the next step or not. So it's, it's a fifty, fifty-plus K right now. And then forward by like ninety-plus K if you want to do it or not.
Yeah.
So I think with that being said, I'm supportive of approving this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Emilio.
Thank you. Is the person still, Alex? I guess I can call you Alex. So looking over your packet here. They says they raised over forty-two billion dollars for voter-approved revenue measures, including more than two billion in the past year. Is that pretty much, that's what I'm reading. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. We work across the state on various measures. We've been in business for multiple years. But yes, we work all throughout the state in different types of communities with different agencies.
I see. And then is there a, I was looking through a packet here, is there a percentage, like, if this goes forward? Let's just say this goes forward and you, you do the survey. What's the voter-approved measure? Is it sixty percent, fifty-five percent? Just curious on that. What is normal?
Yeah, so, oh, so from the, so it depends on what you're pursuing. So it could be a simple majority tax, so fifty percent plus one. Or if you go towards a specialized tax, that would take two-thirds.
I see. And are you familiar with all the cities that you, that they referred to on your client list?
Have I?
Are you familiar with all the cities that are on your client list? All these cities, starting from Aboula Hills down to Yucca Valley?
I haven't, I haven't worked on all of them, but I am familiar with quite a bit of them on the list.
Let me, let me throw out a couple. Watsonville, do you remember anything about Watsonville?
Um, yes, Watsonville, we worked with, I don't remember which year. But I do remember working on some of their stuff, yes.
Okay, and I'll throw out another city, Gilroy. Do you have, what'd you do in Gilroy?
Gilroy, really just off the top of my head, sorry. I, we worked with them, kind of similar to you, to see what they wanted to pursue in terms of a revenue measure.
Okay, and thank you for, for the comment. A couple of comments also on this. I have somewhat experience, and I always saw it seen in another light. I was in education for a long time. And there was one district we needed to hire a consultant to see if we could get some bond money. And they did a survey. I don't remember how much it would cost the, the school district. But we got a poll for sixty million dollars for that. And so I have experience in them. I'm for this project initial, to see where it goes from there.
Thank you. I'll just share some thoughts. At this point, I'm hearing a lot of good comments and getting some background. You know, essentially, we do have a lot of needs. And so this is our time that we've decided to bring the public in to the discussion, which, but it also in a scientific way. Not, you know, sometimes we don't know what the entire community is really thinking out there. So this is one of those rare opportunities where we're going to get some pretty scientific polling and get some real information out there. And I think it's very important that we do that. And especially with things as important as raising revenue or whatever the case may be, to get that, that data, that very essential data, I think, is, is critical. So I think this is a good idea. Obviously, I support recommendation number two. And the scientific feedback we might get. And so, yeah, I think this is a step in the right direction. I also like the phased approach. Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's interesting, because when it first comes up, I'm like, gosh, that, you know, sounds like a lot of money to spend to find things out. And as much as I also love the idea of, you know, can we use staff? Can we use community groups? One of the challenges we have is really bringing that information together. And staff already has a lot of tasks. And, and the other thing that comes to mind is if we go to, let me back up, actually. So being in the field of research, I tend to believe that one of the most important things is to get a real needs assessment. And being that we represent the community, what we really want to find out is what does the community feel we need? Because really, we're about serving what the community values and thinks is most important. So to me, that's one reason that makes this a potentially valuable step. Because until we understand exactly what the public wants on a broader scale, and that sampling is really important, because you get more of a cross-section of the community. You don't just get the people who actively participate. You actually get a wide breadth of the community because they do that outreach. And I think that's often the only way to get to hear from people who otherwise might not speak up, because they're not going to seek out speaking up. They need to be sought out. So it just seems wise to me to find out what is important to the community now. Because the reality is we're going to have to prioritize. We are a city that has a limited revenue, but a lot of needs. So identifying what the public sees as most important, because we can, we're seven people. And we know people, but obviously don't know the pulse of the entire community without finding that out. So I think there's definite value to having that done. And at least doing phase one, I really appreciate that this was brought forward to us as a two-phased approach. Because I think very much that first step informs the second. So if the community decides we want to support something to bring in more revenue for things that we value, that gives us a way to do that. I definitely agree, too, finding grant opportunities. And there are expenses to maintaining a coastline, for example, that maybe doesn't bring in revenue. But we're required to keep it well-maintained. There's a cost of maintaining that. So we talked about parking as a potential way to do that. Would there be support for that? How would we go about that? So I think there's a lot of rich information to be learned. And one thing I have found is letting experts do it versus people trying to figure out how to do it and maybe not doing it quite right, actually wastes more time and money. So there's a real efficiency that can come from hiring experts. And I do agree with the point that should we decide we want to measure, which we may not, having the people who know how to do it well, bring it forward on a ballot in a way that gets support. Because there's no sense in wasting the time and the effort if we don't have support behind it. And that's okay if we don't, but we don't know that until we ask the question and get out there and find out. So for that reason, I think starting the process is valuable. Because to me, the most important thing is to know what's important to the community that we serve.
Councilmember Rau.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to correct the record real quick. There's about fifteen thousand residents in Pacific Grove. Ten thousand four hundred of them are registered voters. So we have an overwhelming majority of people registered to vote. And by the way, in the last election, they voted at almost the highest number by percentage in the county. We hear from a lot of people, but I think it's important to hear from the folks that are unheard. And there's a lot of families out there that can't follow every council meeting. They can't go to every board and commission. And I think this would give the people, the taxpayers and the voters, a voice to tell us what your priorities are. And if the answer is to not do anything, then, you know, maybe we need to also ask them if they don't want to support revenue measures. Then what would they support, cutting? So I think we've got to make some hard decisions. And I think this is a way for us to really understand what, what everyone is thinking. I don't think that we'll get ten thousand four hundred responses, but that would be awesome if we did. But I think that, I think that people need to, to understand where we are and, and what are we going to do moving forward? And I think this is a good first step. So I support the, this, this phased approach.
Thank you. Question over here?
More of an add-on, if I may, very briefly, I wanted to, to follow on on what Councilmember McDonald and Councilmember Rau pointed out about the importance of understanding community priorities. And this is, I really would like for this survey not to be just about what revenue measure we might put forth, but what services then we want, which then require supports so that we can make policy decisions based on priorities, not just the funding for it. So that was a, I wanted to put that in italics and bold.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmember Walking Stick.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I wanted to thank Mr. Marsh and Mr. Mogason for your ongoing work on the five-year operation, operations analysis and planning. It's a big lift. You, you two are doing a great job. I really appreciate it. Thank you. On the second point, there are some things you just hire a professional for. I am not a huge fan of going out and hiring every contractor, but there are some things you just don't shortchange. And the reason for this is because we, we are preparing ballot measures now. We're thinking through them. We're trying to get to, we're, we're well into the planning phase, mulling things over. But we're at a step where we really need to know the temperature of the community. And that's not something we can guess. We don't want to guess that. Because A, we're not going to put every idea on the ballot, right? And just hope for the best. So knowing that we're going to put some things forward, we need to be sure that we're putting the right things forward. If we put the wrong things forward, there's financial consequences to that. If we put something forth that we think is great, but you don't, it fails. And then that's lost potential revenue for an idea that we could have proposed, that you would have been receptive to. But we didn't think that's the way we were going to go. We need professional help on this so that we have a better sense of the community, so that we can, so it sounds trite, but so that we can serve you better, so that we put the right things forward, we make the right moves. The, the deficit comes up often. If we don't make the right proposals now to create revenues, then there's, there's, that, that has a potential to continue. We're not creating the revenues now to address that shortfall. So again, this is an investment in making the right move so that we, we're, we're in a better financial situation here overall. Again, for some things you hire a professional, this is one of those things. Because the consequences of getting it wrong are so high. And that's my stance on this. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve recommendation two, sounds like.
I'll go ahead and make that recommendation not to exceed the 141, 530, but I guess they're going to do it in phases. Am I correct?
Well, that's just a motion on two. It's, it is a phased approach as written in the report.
Okay, I make a motion number two and. That's my motion. Okay, I have a second.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Emilio, a second by Pederi. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye, aye. Hearing none, passed unanimously. Thank you very much for the work on that. Mr. Marsh, and I think you're staying around. You're staying around for the last item of the night here. Okay, well, I think we're thirteen B, so go ahead and take it away.
This is one of the high priority items that was adopted by council as part of the budget for this year is basically looking to establish a pension trust. Be going, oh, sorry, give me one second. Yeah, so just to kind of remind council a little bit, this was presented earlier back in May, April, May about kind of the, the city's pension liability. So we currently, now these stats are a little bit, they will need to be updated when we present the audit in January. We'll have some more updates of this six. But it gives you a relative idea. We have basically, our pension liability is kind of two parts. Calpurse gets us an actuarial report each year. And as of June thirtieth of twenty four, it was about fifty five million dollars. We also have some pension obligation bonds, you know, that we're currently paying off as well too. That's about another six million. So in total, our pension liability basically is about sixty one million dollars. Right now, we have not set aside any reserves for that at all. Well, we hadn't. But with the budget this year, one of the things we did, one of our new policies is setting up a new pension reserve of about a million dollars. So we actually did that with council's approval this year. And it's going to be helping to kind of help to start lower the liability for going forward as well too. So, and this is kind of just a reminder too, a lot of the cities have started to set up reserves. You know, to start help addressing funding their pension reserves, because this is a common problem for cities throughout the state. So basically for looking to address the seize liability, like I mentioned, we basically set aside that million dollars reserve. The idea would be if council approves tonight, the pension trust, we would start in February of this year, basically taking fifty thousand dollars a month. And putting it into the trust to basically build it up over the next, basically two years. The idea is I want to use what's called dollar averaging, because if you put, you know, the whole amount in, it would be ten, potentially more subject to, you know. Variability, whereas if you average it out over time, kind of like if you're contributing to like your deferred comp program, you do it kindly evenly over time. So we're recommending to basically go with Calpurse. They have a very well established program for their pension trust. They've had it in place since twenty nineteen. They have over three hundred million dollars invested in assets and a hundred and two participants. So it's pretty, pretty widely used program. Some of the advantages of this program, the city, we continue to kind of maintain control of it. It is limited. It can only, whatever goes in there can only be used for basically pension payments. But we have the ability to, you know, whatever we want as far as the timings for contributions, we can put in there. If we need to, you know, use it short term to help to pay down for a year's payment, we can use that as well too. So we have more flexibility by having this pension trust. They can be invested in longer term investments, which typically over, you know, a longer period of time will result in more invest, more interest income. On our basically investments. And the administration, that's right, the administrative fee for the program is relatively low. It's about twenty five basis points or less than one percent a year. So basically what they do, they invest in kind of a mixed type of investments. Part is equity, part is fixed income. Part is what's called real estate trust and some, and the other part is basically in flesh, inflation protected securities in essence. So they have two proposed strategies. We are recommending going with strategy one, where the expected rate of return is a little bit over five percent. There is some variability with that, but that's, you know, typically when you have longer term investments, you will have a little bit more variability. But the key thing to mention is whenever we put those bunnies into there, they can only be used for pensions. We can't use them for anything else. That's the key, kind of copy it on it. So basically with this, we're recommending that council adopt kind of the four different items that I have on the power slide. And that's in, you know, the recommend, part of the recommendation in the staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, thank you. Have any comment online for this item?
My hands are raised, Mayor.
Okay, and I don't see anyone jumping at the, at to get to the podium right now here in chambers. So I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council for discussion. Thank you very much for the report. You know, we're kind of embarking on a new area for Pacific Grove, but I think a good one. And trying to, again, there's a lot of proactiveness tonight, so I like that too, you know, for the buzzword for the evening. So this is great. And, you know, we have this pension obligation that we're, we're trying to deal with. So, you know, this is, this is our first step that we're taking and I think an important step. So who else would like to comment? Councilmember Gar.
Mr. Marsh, in, in your slide here, if you'll go back a slide.
Yeah, sure.
It, the strategy one and strategy two numbers don't match what's in the agenda report.
Yeah. Um, yeah, you know what? I think there might have been a typo in the agenda report. I apologize for that. These are the most, these are the more.
So it's not strategy two, it's not three point five percent, they're saying it's four point nine?
It is. Thank you for bringing that up. I apologize.
Okay, so the what's here is, is.
Yeah, actually, just to let you know, Councilmember Garfield, the person represented had looked at the draft of our staff report and noted the typo. So I made sure to fix it for the presentation. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get that five point four. And eight point four standard deviation is. Large swings.
It's moderate. There are some. But I was going to say, one of the, what Purse has done basically is. They, they have come up with strategies that result in basically, so obviously they, their target is six point eight percent. So these are obviously below the target. Well, what they've done with this program is try to have a little bit less variability. You know, in the options that they offer. So you can see, these would probably be, definitely would be less than basically. Because they tend, they're trying to hit the six point eight, and so they're a little bit more aggressive with their options. These are, as you can see with the, the classes that they have here, these are more moderate, you know, in nature. One of the things to note though is that these are longer term in nature. When you have longer term investments, you definitely have more variability. I have a, I have a feeling that the difference between one and two is they probably are a little bit longer term in nature. And also might be a little bit more in the real estate, and which can vary a little bit more. So.
Well, what, if I make, my, my assumption would be that strategy two, which, which offers a lower rate of return. Would have a skewed, a different skew on fixed income versus equities. And I, I'm, I'm pleased to hear that you're saying that they've created a more conservative approach for our money. Because Calpurse's ability to reach their six point eight percent is not always on target. Which is why we do owe more money to them.
And you're bringing up a very good point. If you look at Calpurse's return over a twenty year period, it's, the swings are pretty wild. I mean, they go dramatically. Where these will, you'll definitely still see some swings with either, either one of these strategies. But they'll basically be in a shorter range.
Okay. And my, my final comment is, is that your dollar cost averaging, I think will be really important. Because starting to invest now in a highly inflated market, a very volatile market, is that we could, you know, buy high, sell low. We don't want to do that. So I, I like the idea of staging our investment month by month by month so that we miss the highs. We may miss some highs, we may miss some lows.
That's exactly. And if you think about, you know, when you do your own personal investments, most people would tend to do the same thing. So.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you for those, that information.
Thank you, Councilmember Pederi.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this item up. It looks like this is your day, Mr. Marsh. I was expecting Calpurse to have an agenda item too, but maybe in the future.
And thank you for bringing up that point. The reason I didn't bring up Caltrust, they were having some connectivity issues for a couple of days. So I was kind of hesitant, to be honest, on bringing forward that option. I think when they're settled down a little bit, I can definitely look to bring them forward.
Okay, great.
But great, thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate it.
Sure. So my, I, I think my question is, I think two things actually. One is, any particular reason for not choosing pars over, over this?
Oh, um, pars has a higher, Ed, I mean, when I initially presented the idea of having both, you know, I, I think it's ultimately still good. Potentially have two different firms, but I'll tell you a couple of things. The biggest thing, pars has a higher admin fee versus Calpurse. The other thing is, Calpurse has a little bit more, I think their options are a little bit more. How do I say? I just like their options a little bit better. And it seemed like the rate of return for when I can remember with Palpar was a little bit lower. They're, they have potential to go a little bit higher. That's why ultimately, long term, I think it'd be good to go with both. But I was really concerned when I, because when I was starting to get this report together, I was gonna, I was initially going to go with both of them. But that was days they were having connectivity issues for whatever reason for a couple of days. And I didn't feel comfortable bringing the council, you know, an option where they were having issues where I couldn't even get a hold of them. So I, that's why I kind of really held back on pars, to be honest, but I appreciate you bringing that up. So.
Sure. And this one is like, it's not necessarily hands on, right? Like, I mean, you invest. And then effectively Calpurse is managing the show. You're, you're not dealing with, with these investments directly.
That is an excellent point. Yes, the, this is more I would equate to like an index fund, you know, where you just basically put it in and it just kind of rides the market. Where pars, you basically work with them direct. And there's nothing wrong with either approach. But pars is, yeah, you are picking more specific, you know, types of investments and it's more hands on. That's why their admin fee basically is more. So.
Okay. Yeah, I would just call out that, I mean, at the end of the day, this, this is not going to dramatically. I would say drop our UAL kind of balances. This is just to, I would say, steady the, the trend or curve that Calpurse is not able to provide us. Ultimately, if your, if our UAL needs to be paid off in fifteen to twenty years, it'll still be fifteen to twenty years with this initiative. So I think we need to do something dramatic. That's, that's a different story. But, but I'm, I'm okay with this and I would like to move forward with this. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, can you go ahead and hear from Mr. Lindstrom? He was late and we did close public comment, but since he's the only one, I'm going to allow him to speak.
Thank you. Hi, Lindstrom, you have the floor.
You guys gave me the public comment, but this is a major swing in like one point six to three point eight percent. There should just be a point at which, you know, there, there's a consideration of where the math is done.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to close public comment again. And we'll bring it back to the remaining council comments, right? Clearly, I'm supportive of the four recommendations. I can, I'll make a motion at this time. We adopt all four. And if anyone wants to bifurcate, they can make that recommendation.
Second.
Walking stick is a second. All right, and any discussion on this?
Sure, go ahead. May comment, I, I am also for this, but approximately a year, year and a half ago, went to League of California Cities. And they did talk about this section one one five trust quite a lot. And it was brought up by other people about this, but it fell. But thank you very much for bringing this up. I'm totally supporting. And I'll, and he seconded it. Okay, I'm for it.
Yeah, well, thanks. Now we're good. Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so one of the things I appreciate, because one of my questions is going to be, until I finished reading all the fine details. That there's no implied commitment to contribute or reimburse. So my understanding is, is even though there's this contract to contribute a certain amount, I think it said two hundred fifty K for FY twenty five, twenty six. And six hundred K for twenty six, twenty seven. And maybe that brings us to around getting towards the, the one million. But my understanding is if we have other needs for the city, say we have a large CIP project or something else that needs to be done. We're not committed to the amount we've said. It's just a, sort of like, we intend to do this, but we're not committed to do this. Is that correct?
That's exactly it. So, and yeah, thank you for kind of bringing it, because that's one of the attachments. So let me just explain that. Yeah. The two fifty, basically, the idea, that would be fifty thousand a month for five months. So that gets us to the end of fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. And then basically, the six hundred thousand for twenty six, twenty seven is that continuation of the fifty thousand for twelve months. So the reason Calpurse asked for this, they basically, they use this as a planning tool for their device, for kind of their cash flows as well too. But we do, we could tell them at any time, you know, if we needed to like temporarily hold a month's payment or whatever, we can do that. That's a beautiful. That's the, the beauty of this program is like, we're not locked, it's not like a, like a mortgage where you must make those payments every month. I mean, we are basically, they're discretionary at any time we want to make payments. And another, just to add on very quickly. If, just to remind council of the new reserve policy that we have, anytime we have in a year a surplus. The idea is basically one third of that surplus will be basically then added to the pension trust too. So this is another building block to help connect, to continue addressing the pension liability. So.
Great, thank you. And then I, I really appreciate that we're doing this because it, it starts us on the curve of. Putting that money aside for something that we need to pay anyway, but gives us the flexibility to address other needs if those should arise. And then I noticed that we, between the two asset, the strategy one and the strategy two, the, the two allocations. Do we have the option to change those? Say, one's not performing well. We want to, if the economy is not doing well, we want to go to the less risky one for a while. Do we have the option to do that? Or are we kind of locked into one or the other?
We're, we're not locked in. We can basically change that. I mean, basically, it's, in essence, it's a simple memo to Calpurse thing. It's kind of like, for example, you're, you know, our typical investments, if you have, you know, deferred comp investments, you can tell your advisor to change it. Very similar thing with Calpurse.
Okay. And I did notice that you couldn't do half and half. So I, I noticed that option was grayed out. So I was thinking, well, that might even be one way, kind of put your eggs in two baskets. So one's a little less risky, one's a little more. And that way you, you have an opportunity. But I noticed that was grayed out. So I'm assuming they're not doing that one now.
Yeah, I think right now, but definitely we can look at that going forward. I, I think that's one of the great things. We'll continue to monitor these and we can kind of adjust our strategies going forward.
Okay, great. And I really do appreciate that, you know, council's agreed that this is a priority. We're really looking at the fiscal responsibility. How we can really make the city sustainable long term and especially addressing the unfunded liabilities. So thank you for helping us move in this direction.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now take it to a voice vote. We have a motion and a second on the floor for all four recommendations. So I'll take the voice vote. All in favor, say aye, aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Well done this evening. Thank you, staff. Thank you, everyone for coming out. Appreciate you all coming to the meeting tonight. And we are adjournment. Thank you.